Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education Meeting for January 27, 2025. We have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of particular pedagogical and non-pedagogical employees and matters made confidential under federal law, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education Meeting for January 27, 2025. Will we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by our Mohanxic students and then remain standing for a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the father of Robert Rosenbaum, I'm sorry.
(Inaudible)
Thank you Mohanxic students, that was a wonderful Pledge of Allegiance. And it looks like we have some wonderful good news.
Yes, this is so exciting. We have our Mohanxic students here joining us tonight. I want to take a moment to acknowledge so many Mohanxic faculty and staff. Thank you all for giving up your time coming out to support what your students are doing. And I have a feeling the board and our community is in for a very special treat, learning about sun, moon, stars, telling time, and so many other wonderful things. To begin the presentation, I'll turn the microphone over to Mrs. Berry, Mohanxic School Principal.
Thank you Dr. Hatter and good evening to you. Good evening Mrs. Carbone, members of the Board of Education, Mrs. San Filippo, Mrs. Amerling, parents, families, staff, and students. It is my absolute pleasure to be here this evening with 12 of my first grade students, first grade teachers, and staff to present the Mohanxic Good News. We decided to highlight the S in esteem and share a little about one of our exciting science units. Our students have learned a lot and have a lot to say about the sun, the moon, and stars. But before the students begin the presentation, I'd like to thank both Mrs. Dable and Mrs. Fromer, who are instrumental in preparing the good news. They cannot be here this evening due to them not feeling well, but they send their regards. And students, they know you will be great. Thank you to Mrs. Yates and Mrs. Brackett for willingly and happily stepping up and assisting us this evening. Our K3 Science 21 program is engaging and exciting, and our students learn so much through the study of physical, earth, and life science. This evening, our first graders will share with you their exploration into the wonders of the sun, moon, and stars. We are excited to showcase their learning and creativity as they share what they discovered about the universe around us. Thank you.
Have you ever thought about what we did before we had clocks and devices to tell us the time, to know what season we are in, and even to know where we are? We're excited to tell you why learning about the sun, moon, and stars is so important. The sun shows us daytime and nighttime. The moon changes its shape to tell us about the month. The stars even help us know what season we are in. They also help people find their way.
Hi, my name is Henry Yamad, and I am in Miss Simone's class. You know what can follow you all day but never keep up? That's right, it's a shadow. Here she from Miss Trilla's class is going to show you what that looks like using a flashlight and a glue stick. In science, we learned that shadows change during the day because the sun looks like it's moving across the sky. In the morning, the sun is low, so shadows are long. At lunchtime, the sun is high, so shadows get short. And in the afternoon, the sun gets lower again, so the shadows get longer, but point the other way, it's like the shadows are dancing as earth rotates around the sun.
One of the activities that we do is, we have a smaller, and our flashlight, what is the flashlight supposed to be meaning? The sun, hold it up. When the sun is hiding behind the twelve moons, where is the shadow? Right underneath, right. Now, show it like in the morning, hold on a second. Where is the shadow? Where's the shadow? Where is it? Fall away on the opposite. Excuse me, can you put the other way so we can get it on film? Can you do it again? Yep, ready? Right up top. Right up top. Where's the shadow? What happens when it's on the other side?
Hi, my name is Melanie McDonald, and I'm in Mrs. Heinz's class. I learned something new, I learned something cool about shadows and the sun. You can use shadows to see how the sun moves in the sky. We made a simple sundial by putting a stick in the cone on the ground, and every 10 minutes we marked where a shadow was. This, the shadow moved because the sun moved, and it even changed how long it was. This showed us how time passes and how the sun's position changes during the day. It was like making our own clock with shadows.
Hi, my name is Leila Locker, and I'm in Mrs. Heinz's class. Tonight, I want to tell you about the moon. The moon looks a little different because it changes its shape or phase as it goes around the earth. It's a tiny sliver, sometimes a big circle, and then it gets smaller again. It also moves to a different spot in the sky each night. It takes about a month to go through all its shapes and start over like a big clock in the sky that helps us keep track of time. Mrs. Brackett and some friends are going to demonstrate how it works.
So, we would like to invite a few members of the board if you'd like to participate in this activity.
Leila, Kalani, Henry. Go, Pete.
Charlotte?
Daddy.
Come on Pete, you come on there, come.
These planets here are earthlings, you live on earth. Anywhere earth goes, they have to follow. You will also be earthling. So, you have to be right in front of earth. So, your goal is you want to always be happy. But, I'm the sun. I am going to be shining my light at the moon. We cannot see the moon unless the sun is shining on it because the moon does not make its own light, it must be illuminated by the sun. So, when you, the sun is on the opposite side of the moon, can, what can you see? How much of the moon can you see? Earthlings. How much of the moon can you see? Oh, none. None of the moon. So, that phase of the moon is called the new moon. Earth, can you rotate? Earth is rotating, earthlings must follow. Earthlings, how much of the moon can you see now? Adult earthlings, how much of the moon can you see? Can we speak? How much? Half? What do we call that? Do we call it half? Quarter? That is the proper terminology, quarter moon. It's actually first quarter moon. Earth, can you rotate? I'm so sorry for blocking you. Okay, I'm going to blind you again, I apologize. Stand right behind the earth, earthlings, thank you. How much of the moon can you see now? Sorry, Dr. Hatter. How much of the moon can you see now? Somebody answer? All of it? What phase is that? Full moon. Excellent. Earth, rotate. And what, how much of the moon can you see now, earthlings? Half? Is it the same half or the other side? Other side. This is called, what's the phase called? Quarter moon. Can you rotate? New moon, we're back to the beginning for new moon.
Hi, my name is Mark Homo, and I'm in Miss Heinz's McCartney's class. We used that moon giant to observe what was happening to the moon many nights. Every night, we looked at the moon to see what looked like. Some nights, it was a little crescent, then it got bigger and became a full moon. And then it got smaller again. It was so cool to see how it changed. Reading all down, we learned that the moon has a pattern and repeats the same shape or phases. Each month, we, now we will look like, now we can use this to guess what the moon will look like on certain days in the future. It's like a calendar in the sky.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Moran, and I am in Miss Heinz and Mrs. McCartney's class. Tonight, we are going to demonstrate how the earth, sun, and moon are all connected with a movie we made in class. The sun is actually a bright star, and the earth is a planet that goes around it like a merry-go-round. The moon is a smaller ball that goes around the earth, kind of like how a toy car goes around a bigger toy track. You can see how the yellow ball is the sun, the smaller ball for earth, and the smallest ball for the moon. And then, we are going to make the earth and moon go around their own circle around the sun.
Hi, my name is Melody DiMartino, and I am in Mrs. Rattell and Mrs. Children's class. When you look up at night, the stars make cool pictures in the sky. They kind of look like puzzle pieces where a bunch of tiny lights fit together to make shapes like a Big Bear or even a Hunter. These constellations are like secret codes that help us find our way around the night sky.
Christopher, your name. Christopher.
Hi, my name is Christopher Young, and I am in Mr. Bosser's class. Did you know that a bunch of tiny stars in the sky connected can help tell you what season we are in? The Big Dipper is like a big shiny spoon and have stars in the sky. The Big Dipper has two pieces, and has them made of three stars and a bolt made out of four stars. In the, in the winter, it is high up and pointing down like a big scoop. In the spring, it starts to tilt sideways like a spoon. In summer, the Big Dipper looks low in the sky and almost looks like it's lying on the ground. In the fall, it starts to stand up again.
Hi, my name is Brendan Golchuski, and I am in Mr. Bosser's class. The Big Dipper changes how it looks because it moves across the sky as the earth goes around the sun. We know that constellations are groups of stars in the sky that make up pictures. Long ago, people looked at the stars and saw shapes like animals or things. In class, we used glow-in-the-dark stars to create our own constellation and even got to name it.
Hi, my name is Joanna Bettina, and I am in Mrs. Rattell and Mrs. Children's class. Thanks to the PTA, we had StarLab come visit us in December. StarLab is an inflatable planetary system that shows us the amazing world of the moon and stars. We used our imagination to make images in our mind using the stars, then got to see the constellations that we see in the night sky.
Hi, my name is Justin Silva, and I am in Mrs. Schuller's class. It was fun to crawl through a tunnel and seeing the night skies at school. I like learning about the stars and stories they tell us.
Hi, my name is Maisy Bisset. I am in Mrs. Schuller's class. Mrs. Brackett comes to our classroom every week to help us learn about the cool things in our world.
Thank you to all of our friends that presented tonight. None of this great work would be possible without the support of our Board of Education, Dr. Hatter, Mrs. Amerling, our PTA, our parents, our staff, and especially our teachers that are here tonight. If they would stand for a moment so we can recognize everyone who's here tonight. And staff, and we have staff. On behalf of our Mohanxic school family, we want to thank you for giving us this wonderful opportunity. Thank you.
Well, Mrs. Berry, thank you because you thank everybody else but not yourself. Your staff is amazing and your kids are just beyond amazing. So, we appreciate everything we learned about stars and the sun and the moon, especially my two board members over here that had to move around. I'm going to start over here because I think a lot of board members would like to address our students, if that's okay. Mike?
Thank you so much, everyone. That was wonderful. It's always great when we get to see our youngest learners in the district or some of the youngest. And for bringing science to action and to light, that was really wonderful for us. Thank you.
Sure. That was wonderful. I think that the best way to show us how well you mastered a subject or how much you learned about it was to be able to teach us about it or how to do it or some of the experiments that you did throughout the past month or two. And you definitely mastered it. You taught us a ton tonight, and what a great way to show us and demonstrate that you were just very strong learners. So, thanks for coming out tonight.
Rashmi?
Students, you did a great job. You spoke so well, you shared your experiment with us. Thank you to our staff for being here. And I just want to share a little story. So, when I was a young child, I had gotten lost in the desert. And I can tell you that after a while, the dunes all looked the same. But using the direction of the sun, as you explained in your slides today, we were kind of able to navigate our way back to the direction that we came. So, thank you for sharing some of life's lessons, you know, with us tonight, and I hope you enjoy it for many more years to come.
Lisa?
So, just to follow up on what Ms. Reynolds says, not only did you guys learn the subject matter, but you taught us, I did not know that the Big Dipper changed with the seasons. My whole life, I just thought I couldn't see it the right way. So, thank you for teaching me that. But most important was the way you guys stood up there at that podium. It can be super scary to stand up there, and you guys did it, and you did it proudly, and you spoke so well, and we are just so proud of you.
Catalina?
I agree, everybody did such a great job speaking, and it's not easy to speak in a room full of people. And I saw Maisy, and she was a little nervous, and by the end, she told me to bow when I was an earthling. So, everybody did just such a great job, so very proud. And I see that even at lunch, you have cones outside, so you're taking this throughout the whole day. So, thank you so much to all the teachers.
Peter?
As one of the earthlings, if it wasn't for the students, I wouldn't have gotten any of the answers, so thank you very much. So proud of our students, our teachers, the staff. It's wonderful to see every time a board meeting comes on and we see the good news. It's the highlight of my night. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You guys put the biggest smile on our faces. It makes our meetings go so much better after we get to see you. I'm going to let Dr. Hatter end it for you.
All right. So, just words of thanks and commendation. First, I'm going to start with the teachers. Your jobs are so challenging in the classrooms. We all get that, we all know it. And to put on display what your children are doing and doing at such a high level is just so impressive. I appreciate you all coming out on a Monday night. The week just started, it's a long week, you have families of your own, and you're here just giving up your evening to be here. So, thank you and for the staff in the back who didn't stand up. I see you back there as well, and it's just so great to just see this Mohanxic family of faculty and staff come together around our students. Parents, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge your children, and then I'm going to acknowledge you. So, students, I am so proud of you. You did such an amazing job up there, one after the other. You haven't been reading for too many years. You're relatively new readers, and to get up in front of a podium, read some really challenging words, but you're reading at the podium, many adults in this room would have trouble doing that. And you all stood in front of that podium, you were confident, you did such an amazing job, and you made me so proud to be your superintendent. So, parents, I just want to also take a moment to thank you for sharing your children with us. You're their first teachers, you're their best teachers, I say that all the time. We're honored to have them for seven hours a day and spend some time with them. Your children are amazing, I think you already know that, but if you haven't heard that today, I think it's good to hear that at least one more time today. Your children are amazing. It's an honor to, for us, to be able to work with them, and we appreciate you entrusting their learning to us. You all are busy. You all had a long day today, and you've made the time to be here tonight. Don't think that we don't recognize that and we don't appreciate that. Your support, your partnership, your collaboration is just beyond measure, and I'm just so grateful to have this partnership between the schools and our community. Students, maybe take it easy on your parents, you guys are going to get home late, there's bath times, there's routines that you have to do. Be good, go to bed when they tell you. Tomorrow's lunch menu, if I have the Mohanxic lunch menu on my mind, it's cheeseburger tomorrow. So, today was a muffin pack, was today muffin pack? Tomorrow's cheeseburger. So, hopefully you guys like that, mom and dad don't have to make lunch for tomorrow. But again, thank you all so much for coming out. What we're going to do is we're going...
Do we want to do the next one first?
Yeah, we'll do, so we have one more recognition that we'd like to do before we do a brief intermission. And I do want to take a moment to acknowledge a very special guest in the audience today and to acknowledge our very special guest in the audience. Say we have one more recognition, and then we're going to take a brief intermission to allow everybody to get on with their evenings. And then, obviously, you're welcome to stay. We have a budget presentation and a couple of other presentations. I'm going over the calendar for next year as well, but I'll email that to the community tomorrow. But what we'll do is we're going to invite, we have some friends from Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs here, people who I'm proud to call friends, Dr. Jim Ryan and Dr. Lynn Allen, I'm going to invite to the podium to recognize a student of distinction. We have Malachi here this evening, we're going to be recognizing Malachi. So, Dr. Allen, is it okay if I invite you to the podium? Can Malachi come on up?
Good evening, everyone. Wow, that was, that's going to be a tough act to follow. Congratulations to all of you. We picked the right night to come. We hope to continue the wonderful accomplishments though, tonight. Again, my name is Lynn Allen, I'm Deputy Superintendent at Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs, and in one of our treasured 18 component school districts, it's always wonderful to return to Yorktown and have the opportunity to convey how much we appreciate your ongoing support and partnership in all things, but most importantly, the support of our amazing shared students. On behalf of Neil Boyle, our district superintendent, and our BOCs board, one of the members who is here tonight, Dr. James Ryan, board trustee, I would like to sincerely thank the Yorktown Board of Education, Superintendent Hatter, and the Yorktown Cabinet for providing us time to celebrate our outstanding student of distinction. At this time, it is my great pleasure to introduce Dr. Melissa Caffaro. She is supervisor of our local school building programs. She's going to introduce the rest of our BOCs family who is gathered here today to celebrate and also do the honors of recognizing our special student of distinction.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Hatter, and the Yorktown Board of Education for having us here tonight to highlight Malachi's success. I'd like to thank Dr. Genexi for coming to support us, as well as the team from Oasis Middle School and actually from Lincoln Titus Elementary School where Malachi started last. So, thank you, Mr. Ronco, Mrs. Rodriguez, Mr. Garagna, Ms. Geiter, Ms. Taiwo, and Ms. McKeerney for coming to support Malachi tonight. So, Malachi is greatly impressed his teachers and the Oasis Middle School program. Not only is he a stellar student, he consistently demonstrates a strong worth ethic and has a genuine love of learning. He's always engaged in his classroom activities, he works diligently to produce superior work, and when it comes to interacting with his fellow students and staff members, he's engaging, friendly, and genuinely cares about others. He has a great relationship with staff, and he is always the first to offer help from his classmates. We are so proud of Malachi for all of his hard work, his positive attitude, and his ability to make us all smile. Congratulations for earning the student of distinction for the month of January.
Oh, you got it. Away from the podium. I'm sorry. The podium's blocking us. Lynn, no, come on in.
We're going to take more pictures after this, too.
Oh, let's move out.
One more.
And our communicator, Brian's going to take a couple. Jackie, is it okay if I put us into a quick recess? So, we're going to take just a brief five-minute recess. We do have a long meeting ahead of us. Again, you're welcome to stay, but if you want to get started on your evening and your routines, you're welcome to do that as well. We ask that you depart from this...
and he is always the first to offer help from his, to his classmates. We are so proud of Malachi for all of his hard work, his positive attitude, and his ability to make us all smile. Congratulations for earning the student of distinction for the month of January.
Put this on you? Oh, she got away from the podium. I'm sorry. The podium's blocking us. Lynn, no? Come on in.
We're going to take more pictures after this, too.
Oh, let's move out.
Yep.
And our communicator. Brian's going to take a couple. Congratulations. Jackie, is it okay if I put us into a quick recess? So, we're going to take just a brief five-minute recess. We do have a long meeting ahead of us. Again, you're welcome to stay. But if you want to get started on your evening and your routines, you're welcome to do that as well. We ask that you depart from this door within just a matter of minutes. We appreciate it. Thank you.
But Dr. Hatter, can I just say one other thing about Mohansec students? They sat very, very patiently. They have wonderful manners. So, thank you. All right. Thank you, Dr. Hatter. The kids just get cuter and cuter. I don't know what's in the water in Yorktown, but it's, cuteness is crazy. So, thank you. We're up to public comment. Nobody signed up. Is that correct? Okay, so we're going to move back on to the superintendent's report, Ron.
Okay. We have a couple of components of the superintendent's report. But the first, we'll begin with a presentation on general support, facilities, benefits, and transportation. And this is the second installment of a series of presentations that we'll be delivering to our board and to our school community throughout this budget development process. Please note, for our community, all of our budget presentations are posted online. They're very visible on our website. So, not only are the slides posted, but we also take excerpts of the meeting with just the presentation component. We post that as well. So, all of the information is accessible to our community. So, to deliver the second presentation of our budget installment series, I'm going to turn the microphone over to our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Ms. Lisa Samplelipo.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you for letting me present to you tonight on the budget. I hope it's as exciting as these kids were, but we'll see. So, tonight, we are presenting the areas of general support, facilities, operations and maintenance, employee benefits, and transportation. It should be noted that all the numbers presented tonight are tentative and may change when we complete the budget process. We're very early on in the process, so the numbers are definitely subject to change. The board will adopt the final budget in April. So, included in general support includes all departments in the central administration. Some of the larger line items include salary adjustments for the 63 nonrepresented employees district-wide. There is a proposed increase in general property and liability insurance in the premiums and deductibles. And there's also an increase budgeted for Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs, that we just saw here tonight, the administrative and capital charges. Also, as part of central administration, that includes the Board of Education and the District Clerk, the Office of the Superintendent and Public Communications, the Business Office, auditing and legal services, and human resources. So, this is an overview of where we stand right now with the departmental budgets for each department. I highlighted some of the larger numbers. But overall, we're looking at a budget increase of about $118,000, 3.1%. Again, the largest increases are in insurance. We don't know what the actual insurance increase rate will be yet, but there's a number budgeted in there for now. Back to the BOCs, these are mandatory charges as we are component of BOCs. So, we don't have any discretion over these administrative or capital charges. And I already mentioned the salary adjustments. So, next, we'll cover the facilities, operations, and maintenance. This is, these are just pictures of our campuses. Our facilities are over 600,000 square feet, and our grounds total over 100 acres. Our operations and maintenance staff work day shifts and night shifts to clean all of our buildings. Our grounds department maintains over 100 acres of property, including playgrounds, athletic fields, parking lots, and walkways. This involves mowing of grass, maintaining flower beds, and snow and ice removal, just to name a few. This is an overview of our operations and maintenance staffing. We have a total of 47.4 full-time equivalents in this department. At this point, we are not budgeting for any increases or any decreases either for the budget for next year. So, that's going to remain the same. Here's an overview of the O&M budget as it stands right now. We are down approximately $135,000 from the prior-year budget. Most areas have been reduced, with the exception of equipment, electricity, and supplies. As you can see, salaries make up over approximately 57% of the total budget for this department. Utility costs make up approximately 20% of the overall budget. So, there's really not a lot of discretionary spending in these, in this area. So, some of the considerations in the O&M budget this year, you'll notice the salary line decreased slightly. We had some retirements this year. We were able to hire staff at lower salaries. We've also been using substitutes less. Substitutes are hard to come by, so we've been making do without. In terms of equipment, we are looking to purchase some new cleaning equipment at each of the buildings, and a purchase of a new bucket truck for the maintenance staff. For utilities, our fuel rates are down. We've kept electricity pretty static at the same level at the moment. In terms of some projects that we had completed this year, we installed, finished installing our blue light strobes and integrated them into our current security system. We built out the new pupil personnel services space at the French Hill building. We did some renovations to the high school and middle school parking lot. And our prior-year budget included monies to build out our new FlexPath program. That's not, that money's not needed again for next year. So, that's been eliminated, and that's what has reduced the overall maintenance lines. Still to be determined, we have a transfer to capital that we usually, a budget transfer we make every year. It could contain for next year HVAC, HVAC replacement units on the roof of the high school. We may do some more parking lot modifications. And we're still looking to identify any potential other projects that may be included. So, employee benefits, this is where all the fringe benefits for every employee in the district is contained in this area of the budget. The employees' retirement system, which contains all of our non-certificated staff. The ERS rate is increasing from 14.4% to about 16.2%. The teachers' retirement system, which contains all certificated teachers and administrators, that rate is decreasing. It's currently at 10.11%. We're not sure exactly where it's going to land, but somewhere between 9.5% and 10%. Social Security tax, the max is increasing, so that will, in turn, increase our expenses. Workers' compensation, however, that rate is decreasing by 3.2%, so that number's down a little bit. We also include life insurance in this area, unemployment insurance, health insurance. Our health insurance premiums are increasing by 3.9%. Medicare Part B standard reimbursement is increasing slightly for next year as well. And it also contains our union welfare benefits, and that's based on, it's a flat rate based on number of employees. So, here's the budget summary for benefits. It should be noted that these amounts that are represented here represent a rollover of our current staff. There have been no staffing increases or decreases accounted for. This is if we're just taking our staff, rolling it over to the same level so that you can see the impact of the rate increases in the, in the column. You could see that ERS is going up, about 150. TRS, Teachers' Retirement's about $45,000 increase. Social Security, about $170,000 increase. Workers' Comp's slightly down, and Health Insurance, approximately $400,000 in an increase. Overall, it's about a 2.9% increase for benefits. Again, subject to change based on final staffing decisions. Next, I'm going to talk about transportation. We transport over 3,000 students daily. That includes all of our in-district students, plus any students that we transport to private or parochial schools in accordance with New York State Education Law and Board of Education policy. We currently utilize 67 vehicles. I won't itemize them all there. They're, I won't read them. They're all there. Most vehicles complete two to three tiers every day. Routes are designed by the district, not by the bus company. And we utilize transportation routing software to try to find the most efficient routes that we can. This year, we were, by, by using the transportation software, we were able to reduce approximately four vehicles that we were using from, reduced from last year to this year. We started the year with an estimated $400,000 in savings. So, that is significant considering the increase in our transportation contract. So, those numbers tend to fluctuate throughout the year as we need to perhaps add new routes, or add monitors, or remove monitors based on the needs of the students. But that's where we started out, and that's a good place to, at least, to start out as a, you know, with a, with a savings. The new contract increases our rates by 9.5% for next year. And we are continuously analyzing our routes to look for efficiencies that may generate more savings. If you recall, we did have an efficiency study done this year by an outside consultant, and they made some recommendations that we're looking at. And we, throughout the year, we will continue to look to see if for next year, we can find additional savings. So, here is an overview of the transportation budget. As you can see, the largest number here is our home-to-school transportation number. That's a, we're looking at approximately $144,000 increase for next year. That's also taking into the $400,000, taking into account the $400,000 savings we recognized this year. So, we're starting from a lower number. Our athletic and co-curricular field trips includes transportation to all athletic competitions, including sectionals and tournaments, other academic competitions, such as the Aeronautics Club, participation at a national competition in Oshkosh, Wisconsin, and other curriculum-based excursions. The contractual expense is down for next year because the cost of the efficiency study and bid preparation is not included for next year, because we did that this year. So, the final slide. So, tonight was the general support, employee benefits, facilities, and transportation. Our next presentation will be on February 10. We added to that presentation a tax cap and state aid update. Since our last meeting, the governor's proposal for state aid has been released. And we are in the process of examining it and trying to understand the impact to our district. So, we will be updating the community on that next week, or at next meeting. March 3 is the Instruction, General, and Special Education and Technology Budget Presentation. March 24 will be the Superintendent's Budget Presentation. Our budget adoption is scheduled for April 21, budget hearing on May 12. And the budget vote is on May 20. If you have any questions?
Thank you.
Want me to come back?
Absolutely. Peter, we're going to start with you for questions.
With regards to the, the O&M budget summary, just, I have actually a couple of questions. So, the first on the salaries, the reduction there were retirements. Does that mean those jobs were excised and not replaced? Or that's just the amount for less cost for the employees?
Yes. So, we didn't, we replaced everyone who retired. So, it's just bringing somebody in at a lower salary. There were other adjustments as well in terms of overtime. We took some of those numbers down. We weren't needing it. But everyone has been replaced who retired.
And then, with regards to the maintenance on the building and grounds, is that large amount just from the FlexPath? Or are we skimping on O&M and, and, you know, preventative maintenance, or any of that?
No. Right. So, the biggest, the reduction, the bulk of it, is FlexPath. About $100,000 was for FlexPath. But we are still investing in the upkeep of buildings and systems and grounds. Catalina?
No questions.
Lisa?
The decrease in the workers' compensation premium, is that a result of us shopping around, or a decrease in claims? Or what was it caused by?
So, we participate in a consortium with Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs. All the districts are, so we're basically self-insured. So, it's really based on our loss experience, which means that we've been doing a great job, and employees have not been getting hurt on the job. And we've just had less, a lower loss experience.
All right. Great job, Dennis.
Rashmi?
So, I had a question. I know we had commissioned a traffic study for our campuses to see if there were any things differently we could do during the morning rush hour and the afternoon one. So, the campus improvements, is, does that include some of their recommendations in here?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So, one of the recommendations was looking at a bus loop in the, on the middle school, high school campus that can provide us greater queuing opportunities, which would alleviate some of the vehicular traffic congestion, the pedestrian vehicular traffic congestion, by putting the buses into a bus loop. So, that's part of what we're considering. And then, there were just some other modest improvements to each of the parking lots, Brookside and the high school, middle school specifically. But yes, Rashmi, to your point, there was a study that was commissioned, and some of those recommendations are incorporated into this.
Thank you.
I have a question under Facilities Overview on Slide 6. There's an asterisk on the bottom that talks about how we house the UPK program and other childcare programs at French Hill that generate revenue. Do both programs, UPK and the other after-school programs or childcare programs, do they both generate revenue for us, or just the, the one that's not UPK?
Right. They both lease space from us. And actually, the YMCA's administrative offices are now also housed in French Hill. So, they are, they're paying us for under lease for that as well. Mike?
I have a question about, actually, the, in the governor's budget, the air conditioning mandate that's in place. And, and how is that, is, are any of those considerations in the facilities budget that now we have a certain cooling level, not just a heating level required?
Yeah. So, to provide additional context for members of our community who might not be as familiar with that bill, part of the Heat Relief Act has put two numbers, two thresholds, 82 degrees. When an instructional space reaches 82 degrees, a district has to have a plan to make modifications, whether it's drawing the blinds, closing the lights, opening windows to increase ventilation. And then, at 88 degrees, the class has to be relocated. So, for our district, and thanks to this board, and I think it's important for the community here, the foresight of this board, specifically, our facilities planning committee, for having the foresight to invest in air conditioning six, seven years ago. So, we began in a phased-in approach to outfit many of our classrooms with window units or mini-split units. And then, as the next phase of the project continued, we outfitted large spaces, cafeterias, gymnasiums, with air conditioning. So, the, the heat mitigation plan in our district is not as applicable because the vast majority of our instructional spaces are air-conditioned. Dennis and each of the head custodians have already undergone an assessment of each instructional space in the district to better understand, are there any spaces in the district that are not air-conditioned? And there are very few. And if so, what, what's the plan to get air conditioning in? So, some of that would be through including window units or air conditioning and ventilation and some other capacity, but generally through window units. And we're hoping that, given the few spaces that, that would need to be fortified, we would be able to absorb that within either an operating budget or some other source of funds for the district. So, it wouldn't be a capital project at this point because of the foresight of this board and investing in some of those HVAC upgrades.
Thank you. Pete, any other questions? Catalina? Lisa?
One other question, and that's on the electric costs. Are we, are we able to capture how much our electric savings we have based upon all the LED lights we have put into the district? If that has helped us to lower our electric costs, or keep them stable in any way?
Yeah, I'll try to answer that as best I can. We've been tracking our kilowatt usage. We've been pretty consistent. So, to, to, to those ends, the LEDs have certainly helped. I don't know that we can put a, a figure on it, only because we have some... only because we have so many other uses which technology introduced to all these classrooms. So there's other sources that we create electric in these classrooms, and the LEDs, like I said, certainly help. But we only have a small fraction of spaces that have LEDs right now. With the new additions coming, each of the classrooms will be having LEDs. So that will be first in the classrooms. Really, we see the LEDs in large spaces, the gyms, the cafeterias and corridors.
And what I'll add, though, Jackie, to that point is we've stayed relatively consistent, but we've only added to the demands of the electrical system. So by increasing the number of air conditions and device charging stations and all of the other demands on the electrical equipment to have a relatively flat usage of our kilowatts probably is a testament to some of the other measures we've taken to be more energy efficient. That's what I would, I would argue. With regard to LEDs, we also upgraded the Charlie Murphy Field Lights to be LEDs, and that was a huge savings as well because relamping those, those are pretty demanding fixtures. So to relamp those with LEDs was certainly a cost saving. And we're looking at other opportunities within corridors and classrooms to trade out lights on a, on a schedule basis.
Anybody else? I, oh, I think we're good for now. Thank you, Dennis, appreciate your staying late. Ron, you still have more stuff?
I do, right. Just a couple of items on the Superintendent's Report. I just wanted to provide our community an update. This evening, I'll be presenting the proposed 2025-26 calendar for the board's consideration. The calendar is quite standard. I'll ask Erica to pull it up on the screen there so members of our community may view the calendar as I walk through it. It's quite traditional in terms of the days off and looking at the structure. We once again will do the half-day prior to Thanksgiving, that Wednesday, November 26th. Another date I'd like to call attention to is November 20th. November 20th will be a parent-teacher conference day, K-5. However, for grade 612, it will be a regular day of instruction. So that's an important delineation to draw. We are looking at two full weeks again for December. And I want to speak to that, not just from the obvious, but I want to speak to it from the more subtle lens of all of the work that gets done in the building when you have a sustained period of time that the building's not being occupied. So in addition to the obvious, with regard to, you can set the thermostats a little lower, save some money on fuel oil and so on. We were able to get some really important projects done, and I commended Dennis and his team at the last meeting. I'll do it again with Dennis here. He and his team did a tremendous job of doing so many upgrades. There were leaks that were resolved. There was gym floor painting that happened. There were walls that were put up to separate classrooms. So just a dynamite job that Dennis and his team did. Technology does similar upgrades to our networks. It's difficult to take our networks down for a prolonged period of time during the school year to do some necessary updates. So having that two-week period is really helpful in getting a lot of the, not just facility, but technology upgrades done as well. So when we move into the winter, we're looking at a full week for President's Week. We're looking at a full week at the end of March, early April for spring break. We are, and then from there, it really is just a straight, a straight shot right through to the end of the school year. So I put this before you. It meets all of the contractual requirements. It meets the state education requirements for, for school days. And we've had a lot of consultation. We've consulted, obviously, with our building administrators and with our board on this. And so I present this to you this evening for your consideration and approval. Once this is approved, we'll get this out to the community. It is, they're important dates as we head into annual review season for the PPS office, where that first day of school and that last day of school are really important as they begin their meetings. So we want to make sure that we can get that information to them in a timely manner. With regard to just a few other updates, I want to call attention to schools being closed Wednesday in recognition of Lunar New Year. January 29th, Wednesday, schools will be closed. We have our Yorktown High School Dance Company putting on their performances. They're evening up dance this weekend. The presentations are Friday, January 31st at 7:00 PM. We also have two presentations on Saturday, an afternoon and an evening performance as well. So all are welcome to attend. Tickets are available on our website. And so many other wonderful things happening. I was at a girls' varsity basketball game, and there were so many children from Mohansick and Brookside in attendance. And it's a Monday night, it's late January, there's not much going on. The game started 5:00 or 5:30. It was great to see members of our school community come out, and they said, hey, we're just here to enjoy the game, and we're looking forward to a fun afternoon, and it's just so wonderful to see. So if you're at home, you're watching this, go onto our website. Our athletic schedules are posted. All of the winter sports come with a free admission. So come on out, the kids have a great time. There's plenty to do and plenty to enjoy. And it builds that school spirit and that school community that we so love to see on our campuses. So we are, believe it or not, only a few short weeks away from opening registration for spring athletics. So the year seems to be rolling along very quickly. And for members of our school community, to see, it's getting brighter earlier, it's getting darker later. I just ask that a couple of things in consultation with the Yorktown Police Department. Please be careful as you venture out early. There are children waiting outside at bus stops. And also, if you see a bus stopped with its red lights flashing and the stop arm out, please be respectful of the law. Do not pass a school bus that has stopped loading and unloading students. It's dangerous for them, it's dangerous for the drivers, it's dangerous for you. So I just put that reminder out there. It was in my last update to the community, and I just don't think we can reiterate that point enough. So that concludes the update that I have this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to share those.
Just a quick question, because I think people are still unsure or not always sure when they have new students, UPK?
Yep.
K registration?
That's a great point, and I appreciate you bringing that up. So we are asking for anyone who has a child turning five as of December 1st of 2025 to register their child for kindergarten. Registration is open, please don't wait. That is always such an important number for us to identify as the incoming kindergarten enrollment. So much of our staffing is dependent on understanding the incoming kindergarten enrollment, so we appreciate your early registration. Based on the preliminary budget runs from the governor, it appears that our UPK program will continue for another school year at a comparable number. So we're hopeful, we're optimistic that anybody in this community who is, who is interested in having pre-K, who qualifies for pre-K, and that means you live within the Yorktown Central School District catchment area, and you'll be four years old by December 1st, 2025, we're hopeful that we can be able to offer, again, for the third year in a row, a free universal pre-K program for anybody in our community who is eligible and interested. Finally, with that said, April 1st is a deadline for out-of-district transportation requests and daycare transportation requests. Again, that was included in my last update. We'll put that in our next newsletter as well that's going out this week. April 1st is a deadline, there are not many exceptions to that. So we just ask that you act accordingly to have those requests into our transportation office prior to April 1st.
Thank you. We're going to move on to board reports.
Can I ask a question about the calendar?
Sure.
So there's five snow days built in to the calendar?
There are five snow days built into this calendar, correct.
Are we considering online days instead of snow days?
So after discussion with, with some of the administrators in our district, discussion with some of our teachers in the district, if we have to make up snow days, we will make them up in person as opposed to going to remote learning. As I think about the pandemic and the lessons we learned from the pandemic, online learning was one of them and building a platform. But also, being four or five years now removed, no students in our elementary program have gone through an online learning environment. So given the timing that we would have to pivot to an online learning platform specifically for K-5, it's not really a viable vehicle moving forward. So if we do have to make up days, those make-up days will be in person, and they're denoted on the calendar, March 30th, March 31st. I'm hopeful that we don't get to that point, but certainly the potential exists. And if we do, they would be in-person make-up days.
Thank you.
You're good? Okay. We're going to go to board reports, Audit Committee, Rashmi?
No new updates at this time.
Catalina, Educational Vision?
Last time we went, we discussed the cell phone use, and Dr. Hatter had contacted the different administrators about cell phone use. And we thought we would bring it back to policy. But between our last meeting and policy, the governor sent out that she put in her budget about maybe getting a law. So, so we discussed that in policy, and Cheryl will update us on that. We also talked about academic eligibility. And Dr. Hatter will be meeting with the high school to see their policies and procedures. So we'll be discussing that at our next meeting. And we also talked about community engagement and how we could also get the stakeholders and community involved. So more to come on that.
Okay. Facilities, our last meeting was two weeks ago. We're meeting again tomorrow. We're continuing to review drawings and costs, trying to keep everything in alignment as best as possible. We did discuss possibly, and it looks like we're going to do it, originally when we were going to have the fields installed, we were going to install the plaza at the same time. We talked about just bringing the services out now and bringing, putting the plaza in when we do the concession stand in the next year. It just gives more flexibility with the concession stand if we haven't located everything with a concrete block around it. And that's, we're just reviewing everything, working with our consultants and seeing where we go for, just to get everything filed at SED. Our next meeting is tomorrow. Fiscal, Mike?
Nothing new on fiscal right now. We have another meeting scheduled for next week. I believe it's Tuesday morning. We will review the governor's budget proposal and its impact on our budget process. So that's the next step.
Thank you. Policy, Cheryl?
Sure. We last met on January 23rd. We reviewed 10 policies, some of them you'll see tonight. And thank you to Catalina for getting us started on the conversation regarding cell phone use. Catalina and I went to a WPSBA roundtable in the fall, and we discussed cell phones and how their impact on schools. So we brought it to Educational Vision, and then we brought it to policy based on our conversation and Educational Vision and the research we had done with our administrative team. In the meantime, Governor Hochul did, sent out a legislative proposal to restrict smartphone use in schools, including a $13.5 million allocation for pouches and cubbies for storage in the schools. So based on that, we halted the conversation in policy, and we want to put it out for discussion tonight. I guess our recommendation would be possibly to wait to see what Governor Hochul comes out as far as her, what her proposal will be and if it will be actually part of her budget and part of the legislation that's to come in the upcoming months. So I guess if everyone agrees to that, we're going to halt the policy. We had a sample policy from NISPA, and we're going to halt the discussion for now and wait for her, for Governor Hochul's decision. So we just wanted to put it out there to let you know we're working on it. And if everyone agrees, we'll just wait to see what her proposal will, will be. Just if that makes sense to everyone. We wanted to know, we were, we were midstream in this conversation and, and the policymaking, but we figured we'd wait to see what, what comes down the pike.
But we just add also, from the feedback that we received from administrators in the middle school and high school, that they did not see, you know, a large problem with cell phone use. More in the elementary schools with cell phones and with smartwatches and gizmo watches. They saw that more.
Yeah, I agree that we should wait and see what the governor mandates before we take any action. If it's not causing an uproar in our school now, I don't know why we would upset the apple cart unless we're forced to do that.
Yeah, I thought usually with policy, you know, if there was going to be a mandate or a law, you didn't need to have a policy, correct? That was kind of the?
Right.
Yeah, so I don't know. Pete, Mike, Rashmi?
I guess the one thing I'm thinking, though, I'm, are we expecting that the governor is going to come down with a policy? Or as they often do, kind of kick it back to the districts and say, we'd like you to create your policy? And if that's what happens, do we have, do we have something that we're ready to move forward with? I guess.
So I'm hoping it's the latter. I'm hoping it, it comes back to the local school districts to retain that local control of how the policy looks. But I think Cheryl's point's a good one. It's, we're kind of in a wait-and-see approach because the devil always lies in the details. So we heard the proposal, and I'm interested in seeing the language of the actual legislation.
But also, there's, NISPA typically gives us a form that we could follow, a suggested policy. There is one for cell phone use, and we started to look at that in the policy meeting. But if we don't know what the governor is going to require, and if her, and if her mandate is create your own policy, at least we do have the NISPA to start with and, and go from there with the input from our administration as to what issues they're seeing and, and how they can be solved. I mean, there's, you know, there's talk that the children have to put it in a bag at the beginning of the day and get it back at the end of the day. There's talk that it's just put it away in your backpack and don't let me see it. So I think that we really need to wait and see what that mandate is. Requiring our district to take phones away and be responsible for them for the entire school day creates a whole host of problems that I'm not sure we want to go down unless we're absolutely required to do that.
Yeah, I, I agree. And I think also the fact that she put it in with her budget recommendations is a whole nother ball of wax that you may just want to see where it all falls out. Rashmi, did you have a comment about it?
Yeah, I thought I had seen just a couple of days ago that the governor said that it was up to the school districts? Or was that just kind of just part of the proposal? It's not officially been said yet.
I think that was an email she sent out. I got that as well. And it was just, this is what we want to do. There hasn't been, as far as I know, and Dr. Hatter, correct me if I'm wrong, there has not been any kind of passing of anything. Right.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I wouldn't waste my time coming up with a policy to have her change her rules.
Right. Yep.
And as it stands right now, I'm not sure that we need a policy, right? There's no big issue. There's one-off issues with cell phones and, and watches, but it's not a systemic problem that we need to deal with.
We're consistent that we want cell phones away, and we don't want cell phones to distract learning. I think that that's pretty widely accepted, that you don't want there to be distractions in the classroom. So our teachers have done a great job in addressing any instances where that has not been the case. Our administrators have done a great job in following up. But again, we'll see where, and we'll see where the governor takes us, what the details are in the legislation. And we'll certainly make recommendations from the policy committee to the full board for consideration that are thoughtful, that are, that are intelligent, and that makes sense. I really do believe that we'll be able to come up with something that makes sense.
Mike?
So am I understanding correctly that if the governor comes back and there's no mandate, we're okay with what we have right now? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I think we'd want some language that reiterates the point. We already have language in our code of conduct that speaks to where cell phones belong in the classroom. So we do speak to that. But perhaps with all of the attention that this has gotten in, in the media, we can strengthen policy. And we can look at, as other districts develop policies, one of the things that we do is we look around for best practices. So maybe there's language that's going to be included in other policies that we look at and say, you know what, that might work for us, or that's an intelligent add to what we have. What I would tell you is it's not a huge widespread problem in terms of children using their cell phones or taking out their cell phones or it being a visible distraction. We have language in policy already, but we certainly can, can use this as an opportunity to emphasize that language and, and take best practices. Because I think we all agree that there should not be distractions in the classroom. The children in the room should focus on learning. And whatever we can implement to get there, I think is a great idea, short of maybe confiscating cell phones. That's not something I think anybody has an appetite to do at this point, confiscate cell phones. But we'll await, right now, it's all an academic conversation until we see what the governor puts out.
And Dr. Hatter, would you agree that with the increased use of personal devices, other than even cell phones and the watches, that more and more seems to be coming out and more students are using them, that we really may need to take a look at, you know, how do the languages in our policies?
It's not just the cell phones. It's, it's the smartwatches. It's the other forms of wearable technology. It's a child with a MacBook can connect their cellphone to their MacBook. And any, you take the phone away, but any message that comes through is going to come up right on, right on their MacBook. So the systems are so integrated, it's not unique to smartphones. There, there are so many other ways of communication and distraction by way of communication.
To me, it's almost like the cellphone isn't, it, it isn't the issue. It may be, you know, the visible piece of it, but it's distraction in the classroom. And how do you address distraction in the classroom? And is it, cellphone isn't necessarily the only thing. Take that away, they'll find something else.
Right, right, right. Just the last piece of my update, since we seem to have come to agreement that we'll just wait for the just wait for the governor's direction. Our next meeting date will be February 6th.
Thank you.
Jackie, before we move on from committee, can I just ask about the facilities committee? I get it, you guys are working hard and doing... Are we on track with our schedule that we had set forth?
Pretty much so, yeah. I mean, there are, are things we have no control over, which is how long things take at SED, but we are at SED for our fields. We are, know that they are starting to pick up projects for us, which means that we just have to get some finalized details up there. But yes, we are...
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If, if you met our construction manager, you know you better stay on track. We're going to go to board action items. A motion to approve the January 13th meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the treasurer's report for December 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion to approve the claims audit reports for December 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the extra classroom reports for December 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. And then a motion to approve the Yorktown Central School District calendar for the 25-26 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Dr. Hatter, you going to publish this tomorrow?
It'll go right out tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you. Policies. The board will conduct a first reading on the following policies. 1920, accommodations for parents with disabilities. 2130, board measure, board member resignation. 2310, Board of Education meetings. Any questions or comments on them?
I don't have any questions on the specific policy, but Cheryl, maybe you could speak to how it is we come to these policies to select at each meeting?
Sure. Typically, how our agenda is set is Yvette is really our central person who collects all of the information, the requests on why and how, and we review policies. And what will happen is, we may review a policy because we had a request, or we feel like we need to look at it, or something's unclear, or the language isn't, maybe hasn't addressed a certain topic, but it, you know, at this point in time, it should be in there. So, those always take priority typically. Then after that, we go for any NISPA-recommended policies, policies that come down from the New York State School Boards Association, and we look at those, not after that, but in conjunction with those policies. So, we always take a look at those, any recommended policies from them. Then what we do, I think I captured everything that we typically look at. Then what we do is, we start to go in chronological order from the oldest. So, we take the oldest policies, ones that we let, we reviewed in the far, in the far past, and then start up from there. So, we get the oldest first, and then just work our way up to the present day. And, and that's typically how we set our agenda every month. So, some of these, actually, these three tonight were just standard. They were in the next chronological order, as Yvette puts it, and that's why they were on our list. But they'll be on there for varied reasons for our reviews, like I, you know, stated before. So, yeah, that's how, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
It's a valid point, so people know why we look at certain policies and, and when we do that.
Okay. So, the next piece is policies reviewed. Policies below were reviewed with no changes. So, we have 2110, school board access to personnel records. 2120.1, electioneering, and 2121, board member qualifications. So, since these were just reviewed, we do not need to have any kind of motions or anything else. So, thank you. Up to personnel. On recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. Under certified personnel, we have appointments. Other compensation, we have extra duty, coaches and co-curricular, we have coaches' appointments, we have volunteer appointments, we have unpaid leave of absence, and some resignations. Under classified personnel, we have civil service appointments, extra duty, additions to the substitute list, unpaid leave of absence, and a resignation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Business office, a motion to establish a 24-25 per pupil rate of $1,732.18 for health and welfare services to non-resident pupils attending non-public schools within the Yorktown Central School District.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, hereby authorizes the Board of Education President to execute contracts for health and welfare services provided to students who reside in other districts but are attending non-public schools in the Yorktown Central School District during the 24-25 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education authorizes the board president to sign the hold harmless with the fresh air fund sharp reservation for the Yorktown Central School District excursions during the 24-25 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the Red Oak Transportation Agreement for additional services for field trips, excursions, and athletics for the 24-25 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Curriculum, a motion to approve the following Yorktown Congress of Teachers professional improvement proposals for the 24-25 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. And a motion to approve the professional learning plan for the 24-25 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?